Oh, yeah. Really? I thought that was just me.
We all know who you are. Pretty much wouldn't put anything past you.
March 18th, 2015 meeting of the Milton School Committee will come to order. As is our tradition, please join me in pledging allegiance to our flag and our country.
Pledge allegiance to our flag, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda, we have a few changes. We will be under chairman's report. I'm going to talk about a designation that MASC has asked us to make. This has been included in a couple of the communications that they've sent to us, which should be familiar, but I have copies if you don't recall it. Under Finance Subcommittee, we're going to move the full-day kindergarten update until our next meeting. We do not have executive session items this meeting. We should have two next meeting. And I think that does.
Thank you.
You get one before they can come?
Yeah.
One more.
Laura, do we have someone for citizen speak? We don't. Okay. Approval of minutes.
I'll move the May 14th. May 14.
Second.
By Ms. Kelly, seconded by Mr. Zouzis. Ms. Sheridan?
I have a question. So several times throughout the minutes, we have attachment written in parentheses on this. And when you go online and look at the minutes, there's no document that's attached to them. I mean, obviously.
The link that shows.
There isn't a link. So when it says attachment, there isn't a link, but correct. And but when there is a link listed in here, there is. So anything that's handed out should be somehow cross-referenced. So I just think if we could provide a link if those things are already listed on our website somewhere else, or if they could be added in, I think that would be helpful. And that's throughout the majority of the minutes. I won't say it every time.
Ms. Kelly?
Just there are some school committees who actually with their agendas and any materials that accompany it, that there's links. It may be something we want to think about on a going-forward basis, just to be as open and transparent as possible. And then typically, within the documents that are attached to the agenda are the documents that will be referenced in the minutes as well, so.
So sometimes it's a separate thing at the beginning of the agenda where it just says documents, you know, or handouts, and they're listed there, so.
Thanks. Links are easy for us to do. I'll follow up.
Great. Thanks. On the motion, all in favor? Is unanimous?
I'll move the May 21st to 14 minutes. Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any discussion?
No.
On the motion, all in favor? Is unanimous?
I'll move the June 4th, 2014 minutes. Second.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Is unanimous?
I'll move the December 10th, 2014 minutes. A second. Sorry.
By Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Is unanimous?
I'll move the January 7th, 2015 minutes.
Thank you. Moved by Ms. Sheridan.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Kelly. Any discussion? Ms. Sheridan?
So under the superintendent's report, topic one, it says Mrs. Padera asked if students who take the AP course could have to take the AP test, and if so, how much does it cost? And it said $91. So I think if there's a question asked, we should be sure that it's answered, and the answer to that question is yes. So if a student has to take the AP course, then yes, they do. If they take the course, yes, they have to take the test. It's expected that they take the test. Friendly amendment.
Well, in reading these minutes carefully, I noticed that there are a number of questions asked.
There are.
Some of which are answered and some of which are not.
Right.
So I know that Ms. Downs is keeping very detailed notes, so I would say when it's answered, we should show the answer, and when it isn't.
You shouldn't ask, show the question.
Right. Okay. With that amendment, any other discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Is unanimous?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 14th, 2015.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan?
Did you tell me? I'm second. Mrs. Padera, seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Sheridan through Ms. Padera.
I was going to say, I was kind of influenced.
Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Five, zero, one. Or six, zero. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
Are you in favor? Oh, yes.
That was yes? Six, zero.
I'll move the February 4th, 2015 minutes. Sorry.
Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Any discussion? On the motion, all in favor? Five, zero, one. Bagley-Jones abstaining. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Walker. I'd like to invite to the table to join us our English Language Learners Coordinator and Teacher, Alyssa Buchanan, Alisa Buchanan. Welcome, Ms. Buchanan.
My God. Now it's the covers over.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on our English Language Education Program tonight.
You might want to take that mic a little closer to you.
Gentlemen, can you hear her? Is that better?
Yeah. Okay. Copy. Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. By way of introduction, I should say that Ms. Buchanan has, is known at the state level in the world of ELL. She has done, you have done a phenomenal job growing a very small department to service a small number of children to a growing number of children. She works with the state to meet all of the mandates, but most importantly, she is committed to the children who join the Milton Public Schools whose language, primary language, is in English. She takes great pride in bringing those children through their instruction. And on behalf of the system, I want to thank you. You are a tenacious educator and lobbyist, and your expertise we've benefited from in the district, our children have. Thank you.
Thank you for your kind introduction. I appreciate that. So I wanted, oops, let's see. Okay. So this is a little bit about our students. We speak a variety of languages. We come from many different cultures. Families straddle. Some families are born in the United States but speak their native language, and other families, I'm sorry that my back is too. Other families are born in their home country and immigrate to the United States. So children speak not only their home language and English, but sometimes they speak other languages, too. So sometimes family members, their parents, might speak two different languages at home, and then they're learning English at school. So they come with a variety of backgrounds. And our largest population of students speak Haitian Creole. Then for Chinese, it is Mandarin and Cantonese. I didn't, I put them together even though they're two different languages. Spanish coming next. Vietnamese. Igbo is from Africa and Nigeria. Then we have students coming who speak Arabic, French, and then a smattering of other languages. So if they mix, if there's mixed languages in the home, I didn't put them as just a pure language here. So this is what we look like in terms of the population in Milton. I included here, you'll see, the ELL population. That's our current number that we declare in SIMS, the Student Information Management System. And this number right here is FELLS. That's former ELLs. And we, I count them in the totals because we have to monitor the student progress for two years. So we still, even though we don't actively service the students, we still work with teachers to make sure that students are doing well in the schools. So even though our number looks like 64, we're really, we really have higher numbers because we want to make sure that everybody's doing well. So over the past five years that I've been working in the Milton Public Schools, we've seen a general overall increase. This, I want to show you, in 2012 to 2013, we had a high number of 72, and that number fell because we were able to FLEP students. So we were able to transition them out of the program because over these three years, we did put in a number of supports in place, which I'll talk about later, which contributed to students being reclassified or have a change of status so they don't need English Language Education any longer. You may recall this slide from a previous presentation, but there are lots of acronyms in English Language Education. And I may use some of these interchangeably and not realize that I'm using them because they're just part of the language of the pedagogy, of my pedagogy. So an ELL is an English Language Learner. ESL is English as a Second Language, and that's the licensure that teachers have to be able to provide ESL support to students. FLEP or A FEL, they're both the same thing. FLEP is a Former Limited English Proficient Student, but it's kind of changed to A FEL, a Former English Language Learner. ALBO, the English Language Proficiency Benchmarks and Outcomes, those were the old standards. SEI, which you've probably heard a lot about, is Sheltered English Immersion. And that is a model of sheltering content for English Language learners, which means really having a background in specific pedagogy for English Language learners and making sure that teachers are aware of what this pedagogy is and how it relates to students' English proficiency levels, and then how they need to tweak and change their delivery because of those factors.
Cut list.
WIDA are the World Class Instructional Design and Assessment. Those are standards that apply particularly to English Language Education. ELE is English Language Education. The WAPT is the WIDA Access Placement Test. It's a screener that we use that's directly linked to the ACCESS test, which is an English Proficiency Assessment that we give annually. And that is assessing comprehension and communication in English, state to state for English Language learners. It's important to note that this assessment is state to state so that we, a lot of our student population is transient. So this assessment is wonderful because when I get it from another state, such as Rhode Island, who's used WIDA for quite some time, I have an understanding of what that level means and how it translates into how I can help that student. So it's very helpful that we have, we're part of that, we're part of WIDA, and we also give the ACCESS test and WAPT. The RETAL is Rethinking Equity and Teaching for English Language Learners. It is professional development here in Massachusetts that teachers who have an ELL student in their classroom are required to get an endorsement on their license. It's a little bit different than having licensure in ESL. It's in essence a certificate that's attached to their license, which makes them qualified to be able to provide instruction for ESL or ELL students. So a little bit of an overview of English Language Education. We're required to provide service for students by general law, Chapter 71A. All students are screened upon entering the Milton Public Schools. If students are eligible for services, they are placed in a Sheltered English Immersion classroom. So that's a general education classroom with support from an ELL-trained teacher and also ESL-licensed teacher. And service time is determined by students' proficiency levels. So I'll talk further about student proficiency levels and the amount of time, service time that they, that we're, that we need to provide for students based on their proficiency levels. Parents are notified annually of initial placement and continuation of services, and parents can opt out of services at any time. Oops, sorry. ACCESS for ELLs is our annual assessment and reporting of student progress in English and in content areas. So you may have been familiar with the MEPA. That was a former assessment that Massachusetts gave to determine English proficiency of ELL students. It did not assess students' English language in the content areas, and ACCESS does. It's not only social language, but it's also academic language in English. And for exit notification and reclassification, we monitor students' progress for two years after exiting our ELE services, and we connect with teachers to make sure that if they need consulting time, if there's additional, if students are having difficulties and their profile seems skewed, we meet with teachers and make sure that if students need to come back into the program, that they're eligible to do that, and we make sure that they're successful without ESL support.
Substantial edits? Substantial touches? Anything else?
So the, when I started in 2010, there were one and a half teachers in our department. The teachers created the curriculum and aligned it to ALBO, the previous standards. There was limited space. Students didn't have classroom, necessarily traditional classroom space. There was limited support due to staffing. The students participated in MEPA, which only assessed their knowledge of English language, like I previously discussed. And there was limited classroom teacher participation in training for ELL students. You may have been familiar with the category training, and teachers were asked and encouraged to participate in this training in a good faith, but many teachers did not participate or participated in some trainings. Now we have four teachers, three full-time and 1.8. We have a standards-based curriculum that's aligned to the Common Core and WIDA standards. There's classroom space for all students. There's compliance with regulations for service time. We assess students with the ACCESS for ELLs proficiency test. We now have SEI Professional Development, which is linked to licensure and which teachers are required to participate in. And we're also the recipient of the Title III Supplement Grant, which we received last year. That was our first year receiving this federal grant, and this year is our second year. Exciting developments.
Add or add percentages. That's why.
So you may wonder how students, we find students eligible for ELE services. As part of the registration packet, there is a home language survey that is translated into many different languages, and that is filled out as part of a typical registration. Families are contacted. The WAPT screener is administered in all four language domains of speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Language proficiency and eligibility are determined. So there are six proficiency levels: entering, emerging, developing, expanding, bridging, and reaching. And when students get to a Level 6, they no longer need services, and at 5, they're at the cusp of transitioning out. We determine service time and support time by the state-mandated guidelines. We, we are held to these guidelines. In the last CPR that we had, we were told that these guidelines should be the floor and not the ceiling, but we use them as, they guide us in what we provide for students based on the screener that we administer. So students at a Level 1 or 2 get 2.5 hours per day. At a Level 3, 1 to 2 hours per day. At a Level 4, 2.5 hours per week. A Level 5, 2.5 hours per week. And a Level 6, they're no longer eligible for services. They become a FEL, but we still monitor them.
If I might, Ms. Buchanan. So the school committee and the public understands that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education regularly visit school districts. It's a tremendous amount of preparation, a coordinated program review, and they do a paper screening of students' records, and then they come into a district and do interviews with parents and staff. They do observations, and they evaluate special education programs, your civil rights procedures and practices, and English language instruction profiles of all of the children and the instruction. And so that's what Ms. Buchanan referred to. Our program was evaluated by DESI and part of our program review.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying that. So what is it that we use for our curriculum and instruction? So we use a standards-based curriculum that's aligned to the Common Core and WIDA.
We'll have to go downstairs. Is that okay?
Depending upon student proficiency levels, we push in to cooperatively teach readers and writers workshop lessons alongside classroom teachers. We also have a National Geographic curriculum that we use as our pull-out curriculum, and that's at the elementary and secondary levels. The curriculum is research-based, includes multicultural literature as well as informational text in varied content areas. It also includes a lot of the cultures and stories of the students in our, in our program. And it's just, it was wonderful when we implemented the curriculum to have students say, "That's a celebration in my country, and I'm reading this and I'm celebrating it with my friends in my class." There are texts and interactive videos that build content, vocabulary, and language knowledge through National Geographic's real-world context. So, you know, we studied about the Pacific Geyser. We've studied, and we've studied about, you know, varied, varied topics. And kids go on the Internet, and they find the actual videos, footage, photos of the, of National Geographic documentarians, and they, they watch real-life footage, and they connect what they learn in class to real life. It's really amazing to watch them learn this way. And the curriculum has been so beneficial in moving us towards having a global and wider context for their English instruction. So what does our assessment look like? All students participate in MCAS tests that are designated for their grade level. The only exception was students in ELA in their first year in the United States. For MCAS, they were exempt in their first year here in the U.S. ELL students will participate in the PBA, the Performance-Based Assessments, and the EOI, End-of-Year Park Assessments. Students who have entered the Milton Public Schools after March 1st of 2014 and have come from their home country to the United States are, they do not need to participate in the ELA portion of PARK for their first year only, and it's optional for them to participate. But they will still need to participate in math and science exams. There are accommodations for our students when they're taking MCAS in PARK. They are permitted to use approved word-to-word dictionaries in their native language. This is only one word. It's a one-word translation. And students are also permitted to use a content area word-to-word glossary, so for math or for science. Oh, I forgot to mention, too, students are allowed the extended, the extended time accommodation. So, and they are allowed to take the PARK assessment in a separate setting as well. So those students can take it with a familiar test administrator in a separate setting with extended time without a 504 or an IEP. So ACCESS for ELLs is a different assessment. It's a four-part assessment administered in late January and February. ELE teachers receive online training and certification to administer assessment. So we participate in approximately 10 hours of online training to be able to administer the assessment. It is a standardized assessment which determines students' English proficiency level in the four domains of language: reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And the score report includes students' proficiency levels in social and academic language. language. The academic language is measured for competency in language arts, math, science, and social studies. So those are the content areas that are measured as well. So after students are in the program, they've participated in PARC, participated in PARC and MCAS and ACCESS, and we feel that they're ready, they're at a level where they're ready to transition out of our ELE program. So how do we know that? We administer Access for ELLs, and that helps us to determine English proficiency. Then we take into consideration their MCAS and PARC performance. This year we'll collect and, oh, excuse me, we collect and analyze internal assessments, common assessments, and work samples, so we put together a portfolio on the student. We obtain classroom teacher input, and we monitor the student for two years to ensure success in the classroom. So I want to point out to you that in 2012, if we go back to, can you just bring us back to this? So from 2012 to 2013, that's when we had our greatest number of students, okay? And then the following year, we did FLEP a large number of students, so I want you to keep that in consideration when we're looking at the data. So these are our district-wide elementary ELL/MCAST scores for ELA. And as you can see, from 2010 to 2012, our students had a large increase, and in 2012 are consistently showed growth. In 2012, we had the largest number of students who were FLEPs. And our students have then dropped off in the areas of, they've kind of leveled out in 2013, but then last year we had a slight dip. I attribute the dip to, we have greater identification of students who are ELL and SPED students. We also had, we've consistently had greater numbers of students who, in the elementary schools, who have come in without English as their second language and haven't had exposure to English in their native countries. So, but that being said, we are putting many steps in place, which I'll talk about, to ensure student success. These are our scores in math. And as, as we were talking about in 2012, they've gone, they've increased, and then in 2013 and 2014, we've seen a dip, and that's when our students, that's when we've had greater identification of SPED students and also SPED and ELL crossover, as well as having more students who came into the system who were, who did not have a background in, with English, and also were non, were Level 1s and Level 2s, so coming in as non-speakers. These are the science scores. So we still have work to do, definitely. And then as we can see, in 2012, we had our, we had our, we had a very strong group take the Grade 5 tests, we had a very strong group of students become FLEPs, and when we have such a great number of students who transition out of the program, we have a tendency to have more students who are in the Levels 1 through 3, who need more intervention and more support time and more service time. So this is, these are the MCAS scores in ELA and math for the middle school. And this is for 6th grade. So it's showing growth over time. I also noticed a trend with the middle school where, if you'll see here in 2013 and here, the, I attributed the, our students are eligible for support, not only in English as a second language, but also in reading, and so students have, our students have done, have extra support time in ELA, with ELA. And also, our middle school students, the majority of the middle school students have been coming in at later elementary, and so we haven't had necessarily as much time to grow the students as we have the elementary students. And the middle school students have been coming in with, the majority of our middle school students have been coming in from their native countries, and then have, we've, we've identified more students with the crossover with SPED and ESL, and as well, we've had a lot of students over the past two years who are coming from countries that have, the students need a lot of emotional support because they're leaving their home countries because of situations of war and their political, a lot of students are political refugees, so we're, we're trying to support students with a new set of challenges, so. And these are MCAS scores for Grade 10 in ELA, math and science at the high school. In 2010, in 2012, we had a dip at the high school, and we had, we had an influx that year of 13 new ELL students to the high school, and the majority of the 13 were non-speakers. And so that was a challenge for us, and it was definitely challenging for not only our department, but also for teachers and to support them in making sure that students had access to the curriculum, because when you're a non-speaker, it's very difficult to access high-level, you know, biology, math, when you need to grow your English in order to assess, access the curriculum. In terms of student growth, this was for math for last year. It was not available for ELA. But so it's showing that our students have, they're growing, their growth is higher, but they're still low achieving, and so we do have some things that we're putting in place and that we have put in place already in order to address the gap. What, what I did notice is that most 3rd grade ELLs are generally scoring and needs improvement, with students reaching English proficiency by 5th grade. Most ELLs generally scored higher in 2012, which could be attributed to the introduction of our new curriculum that year. Middle school has generally increased each year from both ELA and math, although it's a small amount of growth, but it has increased. And the math SGP shows higher student growth, although we, you know, we are putting in place other steps to, to close the proficiency gap. Some things that we are working on are, we are offering SEI courses for teachers and administrators. We've developed a district-wide course on WIDA professional development to give students, I mean, teachers a background into strategies that are effective for instruction in the classroom.
And Ms. Buchanan, will you share with the school committee and the public that all teachers who are going to be certified, the requirement about this training?
So the SEI courses, after July of 2016, are directly linked to teachers licensure. So in order to, to advance your licensure or to the next level, you'll need to, teachers will need to participate in SEI endorsement courses, and based on previous training. So if teachers did go ahead and take category trainings in good faith, they take an abridged version of an SEI endorsement course, but the majority of teachers need to take the full endorsement course. And there is-
Interesting that administrators also have to take the course.
Administrators are required to take the course because they're supervising the teachers who have ELLs in their classes, and, so that we can, as administrators can be looking at effective strategies within the classroom for specifically targeting ESL, ELL students. We are, we're working on curriculum enhancement right now through the advancement budget. We are purchasing, we, WIDA progress monitoring tools. We're developing DDMs for our ELL students, and we believe that using a kit that's directly linked to WIDA, the Access for ELLs assessment and the screener, we believe having all those tools and linked together will help us to better monitor student progress. We've implemented ELE student profiles or success plans, and because the majority of ELL teachers, our ELE teachers are with students for a number of years, we have specialized knowledge about how to support the children, so we've been, we've been putting these plans in place. They have WIDA scores, their MCAS scores, ways in which to support the family best that we've learned over a few years. We also talk about student interests, so if students have a particular nonfiction interest and we want to get them reading right away to give, get them, get them moving and move their reading levels, we have, we just implemented these plans. They, we also have a checklist, it's a modifications checklist that looks at a student's proficiency levels in a way that teachers can modify curriculum based on a student's actual English proficiency. They take a long time to put together, but we, we hope that they'll be beneficial over the long run. We hope that teachers really use the information, and we do sit down with teachers who need a consultation or who really want to delve deeper into looking at those plans and how we can develop a better, a more cohesive model between the classroom teacher and the ELL teacher to promote student success. We implemented last summer an ELE Summer Academy and through the Title III grant that we received, and that was for, we started off with elementary school students, and this year we're going to expand it to middle and high school. We hope the thinking behind this is that we can continue to grow students' English over the summer so that they won't lose, they won't lose English over the summer months. We, through the Title III grant, we've been working on family outreach. We had a very successful parenting program, or parent workshops last year in the spring at each school except for Glover, but the students, the families at Glover came over to Cali-Cot and Cunningham, and, because there were only two families at that time. And we talked about the importance of summer reading. Through the Title III grant, we were able to provide some literacy materials for families. We talked about students' access scores and how to read, the parenting report and what, what that, what that report meant, and we had, it was very successful, and we had, our district partner is Canton, we write the, we write the Title III grant together, and we are the lead education agent on the grant, and they have, they have come over to observe how we're supporting our families, and it was great to have our district partner come over and have a very successful event for them to, to observe and also try and emulate. And we are providing, we're, we're working with guidance counselors to provide additional social and emotional support for students. We have students who've been, some students who've been through very traumatic situations, so we've been very mindful in how we're going to support students and how we go about, as a learning community, how we support students who have this other layer to their learning. This is just a little bit more about retail. It's to support academic achievement of ELLs. It's specialized professional development. It is, for the majority of our teachers, it's quite lengthy, and it is a, it's a large commitment on their part. We're grateful for all the teachers that have, you know, moved their lives around to participate in this professional development. They, it's not only for teachers of ELLs, but supervising administrators, and we talked about the course length being dependent upon the role of the course participant, so if they had previous category training or if they haven't. Now they're developing courses for reading and math specialists. It's different. I did also receive something today that it's, there's specialized training for nurses in retail, which is really exciting, just ways to reach families and how we, we change what we do. Then we have, we've had over 50 Milton Public School teachers who've enrolled in the, or completed the courses, and 13 administrators, and the course, the SEI endorsement course is, is linked, directly linked to licensure in July of 2016. So some of our successes over the past five years have been receiving the Title III grant. It is a supplement, not a supplant grant, so it's used to supplement what we already have in place. It was very successful last year, and we're hoping to recreate some of that success this year and also extend the program to the high school students. We have had great student and family participation. When we have meetings, we have them before school, right when there's drop-off. We've found that the majority of the families can come in the morning and drop their children off and then go into work a little bit later. We, we've been working with diversity committees, we've had PTO partnerships and other family events. We had a Mother's Day tea last year, and the students showcased their work, and we invited the families in, and not only mothers came, there were fathers too, so. Our out-of-district partnership is with Canton right now on the Title III grant. We've had parent and guardian workshops. We're developing our own localized professional development, and now we have a summer program for the students. And the, the summer program curriculum also is aligned to, to WIDA. So here are some of our students. Last year, we had a student who came in second place in the Massachusetts Science Poetry Contest, the only elementary student in Milton to receive acknowledgement, and so it was really wonderful that he was an ELL student from our program. This is a, this is a great photograph for me because it was the first time that I ever saw students wearing kipow, their traditional dress, in school. This is part of the Mother's Day tea, students working. Father. Another wonderful success for our department is, we had a- Another wonderful success for our department is we had a Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Mary Duggan was Teacher of the Year at Tucker Elementary School last year. And she's an ELL teacher in our department. And these are just ways to say thank you and the myriad of languages of our district. Thank you.
So I think that it's hard to kind of measure with the data that you showed, the success of the, because it's not the same students, right? You're having different students every year that you're measuring. So I'm just wondering if we could, because once they become proficient, they're not measured anymore, right? So it'd be so nice to see the one set of students and follow them and measure how the increase in staffing has worked in terms of getting them, you know, proficient maybe faster or later on, how much more successful they're doing or how much faster they're doing better at being proficient. So I don't know how you do, I don't know if we can do that because that's what I'd really like to see. In a way, especially with ELL students, you can get kids from all different backgrounds, all different levels. You're kind of, every year is a different group. So how do you measure that, even if one's high and one's low? To me, that doesn't really say much about the success of how, how we're doing there. What I'd love to see is a group of those students and follow them, how they're doing, even after they become proficient. And also look at, not just their test scores and how they're doing, but the ones that are, seem to be doing really well, what else are they doing? Are they, you know, the, the poetry and the science award is a perfect example. Is there somebody that's playing, you know, students that are more active, have other activities, have increased social support, emotional support, or, you know, strong family support at home? Maybe they're musical or they're involved in art or involved in sports. Do those activities help? So that's what I'd really love to see because it sounds like you're doing a wonderful job. I just don't think the data is really something that's, it's, that data doesn't show us what we want to, want to see. And that's what you have.
It's, it was so hard to put together the data because we have students who will be with us for a year and then the next year. They're, it's so, such a transient population that sometimes it's hard to even track kids over even a few years because they do move in and out a lot.
Right.
But I can only say this like anecdotally, that I, I notice that the commitment, the level of commitment on the teacher's part in our department in trying to get kids involved in after-school activities, music, doing outreach to Marty, and making sure that families have what they need in order to have their child be successful in out-of-school experiences, but that are linked to their in-school success. We've really tried very hard to make sure that kids are active in our after-school programs, our CAS programs. And it's very hard to document that. But if you had a suggestion or a way that you felt like we could best do that, I would be willing to do that.
I honestly think it would be great, not just for ELL, but all programs where we're seeing students of high needs that generally don't do well in these types of tests or the ones that do seem to do better. I'd love to see other measurements there of, you know, what are those students maybe doing that other students aren't? And what are, what are we doing that is successful with those students to improve their general performance, not just on test scores? But the other thing I was going to say, just to have you speak to this because the increase in staffing, I think, allows, because I know that, I would say at least three or four years ago, students that moved into the district, they might be at one school, but the support was at another. So we would have to move them. And I think that's a big disruption and harder. You know, instead of being around the students in your neighborhood, you'd have to move to a different school. And the parents might not know, you know, those other parents and it's a disruption. So I think that increase in staffing must have changed that because it sounds like you have teachers at every elementary school now.
We do, we do have teachers at every elementary school. And I, you know, I do agree with you in terms of making sure that families can be at their home school or if they live near a school and they, they want their child to be with their friends in their neighborhood. I definitely, I understand that as an educator and as a parent in town from all, from those different perspectives. And we want students to be successful in the school that's, you know, that's right for their family. You know, and we really try and make sure that if they need service time, that we, we get a teacher there for them. And, you know, the, there may be a time where we need to increase staffing in the future as we, you know, we get better at our identification processes. And as, you know, as we do give them more support time, sometimes kids just transfer in in the middle of the year. So, so we do, we try to be cognizant of that.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. It's great. A couple of questions. So for those students who are categorized as a Level One or Level Two, where 2.5 hours of their day are in a separate setting, is that correct?
So we pull them out or we push into the class, depending upon either the content area? Because sometimes if the kids are doing a hands-on experiment or activity, they should be in the classroom and having us help them with vocab, teach. We might pull them out beforehand and teach them vocabulary and give them exposure to the concept. And then be in the classroom with the teacher when they're actually participating in that experience so that they can hear other kids and native speakers. And we really want them to have access to their same-age linguistic counterparts so that, that can fuel them, their language so much faster than just providing them ESL support. So, but we do pull them out for service time also.
So the 2.5 hours per day is not necessarily outside of the classroom, it's just services in general?
It's services in general, yeah.
And so how do you, I mean, I don't know how you do what you do, quite frankly. With the number of students across all levels, across all schools, how do you do that? I, I just, with only four teachers.
We have to have split, split positions. So there are teachers who, you know, will, for example, the high school and middle school teachers are there for four periods a day. And then they go to another school to help us at the other schools based on the, on the proficiency levels of the students. And so some years we'll have, for example, last year, we had two teachers at Tucker, one full-time and then one just two periods in the afternoon. And this year, we needed to shift it to Cali-Cot and Cunningham based on the proficiency levels of the students. So we have to shift around and it also, it changes in the middle of the year because students will come in and, and we won't know. So we, sometimes it can be really challenging because we'll have to mix up the schedules in the middle of the year. And that's hard for classroom teachers and also us, but we, we make it work.
And so Ms. Kelly, if I might, so I think that, to Ms. Kelly's point, you can understand the commitment to this program is similar to a special education program. To me, these are contracts. We have a commitment. And we're very, very lucky to have Ms. Buchanan, to your point about scheduling. She's constantly monitoring the scheduling, making sure that, flop, flop, right? Where the students who've flopped out are monitored. And this is a constant position. And they've maxed, she, you should be complimented. You maximize the employees and monitor these students constantly.
And could you just describe a little bit about the summer program? Because that sounds.
Oh, sure. So last year, we had, it was held at the, at Milton High School. And from eight to 10 were the three to five, third through fifth grade students. And from 10 to 12 were the kindergarten through second grade students. And we had an ELL-trained teacher who would work with those students for two hours a day. And they used a camp, it's called Camp Can Do because in, in the WEETA standards, there are, there, for each proficiency level, there are can dos. So instead of talking about what a student can't do, it frames it as a positive, what students can do in the classroom. And so the Camp Can Do is aligned with the can dos of the WEETA. So it, and it breaks it down. It's very hands-on. It has lots of visuals with it. And the teacher who provided the support last year was wonderful. We also had some additional monies to provide, something that we called in-house field trips, where we had the first, first and second graders last year were learning about farm to market. And so we had Brookwood Farm come in and do some farm education. We had a beekeeper come in to talk to the kids about pollination and the role of pollinators. We also had a, we had a drama teacher come in to do improv and some speaking and drama activities to promote their, their social language as well. So that was really exciting. And that, those in-house field trips happened on Thursdays. And so the summer program was five weeks, but for four weeks, every Thursday, we were able to provide one of those in-house field trips. So it made it, that the kids really wanted to be there because if they, they knew that every Thursday, there was this great experience. And parents loved it too.
That's great.
We were also able to provide transportation for students who had, that was written into the grant. So that students who typically wouldn't be able to attend the summer program had transportation, which was very exciting, challenging to set up. But it was great that the students were able to attend. And, and it just happened that the majority of the students that needed transportation, they wouldn't have had, their parents wouldn't have been able to, there was no way to finagle transportation at all through a friend or, because they, they didn't necessarily have community relations just yet. But now, as we've introduced families and created more opportunities for discussion and meeting and, and community building, I, we'll have less of those students who had transportation last year. But it's, it's very positive.
That's great.
And Ms. Buchanan should get credit. She took the lead on that grant. The Canton Public School Superintendent told me how much Canton learned during their visits. And the, we wouldn't have been able to run that summer program if it weren't for the grant. Did any of those children stay for the regular summer school for the balance of the day?
We did. We had students who participated in the reading program. And I believe there might have been one student who didn't participate in the whole morning. But with the exception of that one student, the children either participated in the reading support program and ELL support program or they were in ELL support and then they did summer enrichment.
Wonderful.
Sharon?
So this was a wonderful presentation. It was so comprehensive. Really helpful to people who don't know anything about English language learners. So thank you for that. Oh, sorry. Mrs. Padero's hogging the microphone. I'm so glad you mentioned the can dos because I think so often when we talk about English language learners, we talk about what they can't do. And that's a big part of the WEETA is, you know, acknowledging what they can do and, and celebrating that. So I was, that was exactly one of the points I was going to make. So I was really glad to hear that that's the focus of your summer program because there is a lot that they can do. And, you know, we just need to celebrate that and build, build on those successes. One of the things that, when you talked about the different levels of the students, it would be helpful, I think, just to, just for the general viewing public to get a sense of how many Level Ones, how many Level Twos going forward. Just because that really plays a role in the demands on your time. I have one built, I, one school, K to eight, I have more ELLs in my 500 students than you do across the district. So the, the scheduling piece that Mrs. Kelly was talking about is, is just almost nightmarish when you try and, and cover those hours and provide the services. So you are so, doing such a good job at that and to be commended. And then just finally, I want to say, the success plans are another great, you know, strategy that you, you've put in place. And I, and I think that, you know, having your eyes on those kids and sharing that information with parents and staff, it's just really important work. So thank you for all you're doing for our students.
Bagley Jones?
I think, thank you for the presentation. And I think that you have such a positive outlook on this program. It helped me because frankly, not that I think MCAS are the be-all to end-all, but to see the amount of kids that, you know, are at this level was very disheartening, especially in a town like Milton, where we're used to kids doing really well on our MCAS and other tests. So that was a little discouraging, but I appreciate you, I learned a lot and I appreciate that. I had a couple of small questions. How long do you have on this grant? You might have said that and I missed it.
How long do we have on?
The grant?
The grant, so it's a, it's a grant per year, so a school year. So it goes, so this year, the grant will end in August.
Okay.
So each year, we have to apply for a grant, for the grant.
Okay, okay. But there's a possibility we could keep getting it?
Yes.
Okay, all right, great. And then the other question I had was languages for the parents. Do you have, I mean, how do, you obviously have staff that speak their languages if they don't speak English, right? So.
So we work with interpreters often. We, for parent-teacher conferences, we, we bring in interpreters to make sure that we, that, that we can communicate with families. And we also have family members who come along to conferences to make sure we do speak some languages in our department, but not every language of, of the families. And, but we find ways to communicate with families. And I can say that, you know, typically, you know, there have been times when teachers are, they're not sure how to communicate with families, so they come to me and we, I make sure that we hold students to the same, to same standards, behavior-wise, educationally. And then when we need to communicate, we, we find a way to do that because we want students to be successful.
Okay, thank you.
So we, and we have a lot, we've had families that are, you know, they're non-speakers of English. And they are, they are at school. They are participating in programs even though they do not speak the language.
That's wonderful.
And Ms. Buchanan's done a tremendous amount of work sending the memos home in their respective languages. We got over that hurdle.
Yeah, I remember that. And then the other thing, the last question was around professional development for the adjustment, working with the kids, many of whom you said come from quite traumatic backgrounds. And I know that for the adjustment counselors and the guidance counselors, their professional development is sort of lumped in with the teachers. And this might be an aspect, it wouldn't, it's not might, it would be an aspect that I think would be very helpful and informative and for Marty as well. So maybe we can look at that.
And when, when Ms. Buchanan and Ms. Bagley Jones referred to Marty, we're going to refer, talk briefly, the school committee had asked about our parent liaison. And you've spoken to the partnership that you and our parent liaison, Marty McKenna, have formed.
She's been fabulous. She's been very helpful to our department.
Well, I'd say you should be, you and your team should be commended. This is pretty amazing work. And I can't imagine what it would be like to come to a country where you don't speak the language at all, which is difficult enough, and try to achieve in the academic world at the same time. So this is great work. As you say, there are still some challenges, but I think you should feel very, very good about what's happened over the last five years. I have just one question. Can you talk a little bit about how the approaches differ at the middle school and high school level? I would, I would think that's an even greater challenge.
So at the middle school and the high school, we have an ESL class. So it's part of their, their, their schedule. And based on their proficiency, they have their, they have an ESL class on their schedule. So if they are a Level One or Two, they receive two periods of ESL per day or ELE. And the classes differ by proficiency level. So if you're a One or a Two, you won't, you will not receive the same curriculum nor support as a Level Two or a Level Three. And so that's what it looks like at the middle school and the high school. We have four periods of scheduled ELE services at each, at each particular level. And the curriculum is determined by the students' proficiency levels.
Great.
Yeah, that actually, I'm sorry, that actually raised a question in my mind. So how does that, is that the same as the sheltered English immersion classroom in the middle and high? Or is that different from what's done at the, at the elementary level?
So that's different.
Okay.
That's the model that we're allowed, we provide to them, right? That's the model that we're allowed, we provide to them, right, to provide and support students with right now. I have talked at the middle school level about working with content area teachers to consult or work on curriculum, to modify curriculum for a sheltered English immersion classroom. So the sheltered English immersion classroom is a teacher who has the specialized training to be able to modify the instruction for ELLs. And even though teachers are going through the SEI training, they still need assistance and support from an ESL professional to be able to say, well, have you tried this, this, and this? Or if we're, have you really looked at the student's success profile to be able to modify the instruction? And based on the can-dos and then modifications for the students. So it, ESL is a, is a, is a class. And then the teachers have the training to provide the sheltered content.
So Alyssa, can you make sure that each member of your team knows that every member of the school committee member, of the school committee was impressed with the work they're doing?
I'll let them know. It is a team. And you know, the, the commit, the level of commitment on the part of all, all of us in the department, I think sometimes is kind of under the, under the radar. And I appreciate you saying that. And I will make sure that they know.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan. Thank you, school committee members. Moving on, Administrator of Pupil Personnel Services, reminding the school committee and the viewing public that Karen Clasby, our Director, Administrator of Pupil Personnel, is retiring. And so we've, for those of you new to the process, and Ms. Padera has heard me say this several times in the last two weeks. In many districts, when you have administrative openings, superintendents might screen the applicants and then give four or five applications to a screening committee. But perfected over the last number of superintendents, we have a system that works here in Milton. And so what happens, we form a committee of parents, educators, administrators, school committee representative, and we give all of the applications to the committee members. We brainstorm what we're looking for in the position, in the individual who is going to fill the position. And we have the individuals screen the applications and they decide who they're going to interview. And as I've said to them, I've gone through these processes. And if one person on a committee wants to see an individual, we bring that individual in for the interview. We then brainstorm the questions. So as not to advantage or disadvantage any candidate, we break into, Dr. Jafun had perfected this part of the process into two groups. And so we really have two hour, they have two hours worth of questions. We come together, we share the answers, we share our impressions of the candidates, their strengths and weaknesses. And so we formed a committee. I want to recognize Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan on this first round, PS Middle School Principal, Dr. Spalding, our High School Principal, James Jett. You were well represented on both committees by Becky Padera, school committee member. The MEA sent two teachers, Shannon Brooks, a COAT teacher from the Tucker, Tricia Leahy, a service provider. From the administrative level, we had Karen Cahill, the High School Guidance Director. From our CPAC, we had President Michelle Conley, Doug Conley, and Shannon Gallagher. So we had an outstanding first committee. They saw all the applicants. We interviewed for two different days and we came out with three finalists. The charge is those individuals could be the Administrator of Pupil Personnel, the Director of Pupil Personnel. We then formed a second committee. Janet Sheehan, Glenn Pavlicek, myself, Becky Padera again, which was invaluable to be on both committees. We had our four elementary principals and Amy Tom, our Science Department Head from Milton High School. And so we've begun to check reference checks. We had a second round of interviews. We have some more additional reference checks to make. And then I'll be communicating with the school committee chair as that is your appointment. And we'll talk about how to bring a candidate forward for the school committee to interview and make a final appointment. But I wanted to give the viewing public an update and status of where we are with that very, very important appointment. And secondly, we, in the advancement budget, we had funded this year a data specialist. We realized the need, again, basing all of these decisions on data, the increased data with MCAS and PAC, our internal assessments. Well, I have to tell you, once you get into this interviewing, and it was, it's a very specialized position. We put out a tremendous number of nets and interviews. I want to recognize Jonathan Redden, who worked very, very hard and made a contact. And I'm very pleased to tell you, in your packet tonight, I've given you the resume of Vee Vu. And we have made the hire. And I have to tell you, I don't think anybody, I think more excited than Vee Vu is Janet Sheehan because Vee has extended herself across this district. She has also, in three short weeks, created short and long-term goals for herself. Ms. Kelly asked for a report on internal assessments. We called Ms. Vu in. She had, she was halfway through the presentation already before she knew we wanted to present it to the school committee. And we're going to bring her to your April 1st school committee with some administrators on that internal assessment presentation. So I'm very, very happy to tell you that that hire has been made. And the response from administrators across the district has been phenomenal to that appointment. Next, under my report, we've been talking about the FY16 cut reduction list update, bringing the public back to the process that we went through, building up the budget, presenting to the full school committee, the finance subcommittee, going to the warrant committee, the warrant committee funding the budget. But us having to come up with a cut reduction list of $500,000. We went out, again, we were snowed out of several presentations, but we had an outstanding representative group from across the district at the Pierce School. And the school committee was there to hear the feedback from parents. We had an open budget meeting where we had parents, guardians, and citizens speak to the prioritized list of cuts and reductions. And working with finance subcommittee, we're, I would ask you to take a look at this last as of yesterday morning, cut list restoration priority.
I'm sorry, should I pass these to the?
Sure, that would be wonderful.
Sure.
I don't think that.
That would be wonderful. So I'm going to turn this over, if it's all right, to Dr. Pavlicek?
Sure, just a little, just a little more context, yeah. What, what we asked the superintendent to do was to, based on the feedback that we've gotten from various audiences, to take that feedback and make some recommendations about how cuts would be restored if there is additional funding. And what we expect to happen is that, we're hoping that, that as the process continues, that more funds might become available. And we think that it makes some sense for the school committee to have gotten a consensus on what cuts should be restored and what order. With the exception of the first one where we think that there is a strategy for how we might be able to do that, even if there aren't any additional funds, priorities two through 12 would be restored in the order that you see them as funding becomes available.
And I want to recognize, we say that this process is continual, that the school committee listened to the parents and citizens who came forward at the different presentations and who have contacted us, who have responded to our request for input on the school budget. And as I said at the Pierce School, my observation is, over the years, to see the citizens of Milton and the parents of students in the Milton Public Schools own the school budget, understand the school budget, be versed, well-versed in the school budget, is really, really an amazing process. And to the school committee, to hear the input from the parents and the citizens in prioritizing as funds become available, how these positions will be restored. So I want to turn this over to Dr. Pavlicek to go over the list.
Sure. This list is, has a slight modification from the one you were, that's in your packet. So it's one that says, School Committee 318, 2015, revised at the bottom. There's an edit that was made earlier today. And basically what we just did is to, is to walk through these. You'll notice really the most important restorations, the priority restorations of those of people in front of children. First one is, the chairman mentioned, is one we think we can accomplish now, which is the, we had originally looked at restructuring STEP and losing one, one teaching position there. We have a student who is tuitioned in to the district and we're going to use that money to, in our special education budget to free up some money that we believe we can use to keep this general ed position in, in the STEP program. So this one, we, we think we can accomplish without any restoration. So this is sort of one we can tick off at this point. The rest of them are subject to receiving more funding as we go along. We have, you know, the, the governor's budget is out. There are some increased, some increases in local aid, Chapter 70, and various other parts of his cherry sheet that are encouraging in the sense that they are above what the warrant committee was projecting as our revenue for next year. So there is some hope we'll get some money to restore some of these positions. And so in order, running down what we would restore, the first restoration would be the art-music cuts in the elementary school, the reduction of art in the grades four and five, the reduction of art and music in kindergarten, and the elimination of chorus. So that would be the, the first, the first further restoration. The second was the, we had identified as a high school world language cut. In any case, a, a cut of 1.0 at the high school would somewhat depend on, on student choice and the electives, but it was identified as a world language cut. And that's our second restoration above the, above the STEP. Beyond that, we had identified a number of minor cutbacks, you know, one elective in art, one elective in music, one elective in computer, et cetera. At the middle school and high school, a series of seven pullbacks. And as we mentioned before, when you, when you bring a teacher back from a, a full-time teacher to a .8 full-time teacher, what happens is the person gets laid off, they generally look for another job somewhere else. We end up at the end of the summer trying to find someone who will take a part-time position. It's not the best model. So that is a high priority restoration for us as well. The history teacher at the middle school, which would have impacted the team structure at grade seven and eight, is the next, we put as our next level of restoration. The preschool coordinator was a halftime new position we wanted for this year that we took off our budget request. If we were to get this far down the list, which would be just shy of $300,000 in new money, that would be one, actually, a new halftime position that we, we would want to add. For coordinating all the various different preschools, then we have three different preschool situations in, in three different schools. So there's a reasonable amount of coordination to do there. The, going down the list further, we have the, the administrative shift at the middle school where our model of two vice principals would be replaced by one vice principal and a dean, which is a lesser, non-evaluatory position. The reduction of one of our administrative assistants. And then some cuts in professional development, text materials and supplies and equipment are at the bottom of the list. So our priorities were to restore positions that were in front of children. And then at the lower end of the list is either positions that weren't directly in the classroom. And then finally, those cuts that actually are non-personal cuts, we would, would certainly be the last to restore. So that's the, this came out of discussions at the finance subcommittee, again, with the central office administrative team. So that's what we have for you tonight.
Mr. Padere?
So, Dr. Pavlicek, do we know at all? I know it's hard to say about the timing of this. I'm just wondering of, you know, teachers that might be being reduced or cut, you know, their timing of having to worry about finding another job or, you know, how long they're going to be kind of wondering that before we look at the funding that might be coming in or not coming in?
Well, the, again, there are several layers to the process for the town. The funding that might be available, we, we certainly know right now that would, should the governor's budget prevail, we would get about $275,000 in additional funding to Milton. Even, we will see how that plays out in the House and Senate. The House budget should be coming out shortly. They're working on it now. That'll give us a better indication. Some of the adjustments in the governor's budget are formulaic. There were some reduced charge backs to the town. There was a reduction in the cost of retired teachers' health insurance, for instance, a reduction in some other costs. Those are formula costs. So those are probably pretty solid. The increase of $20 a head for Chapter 70 is less than it's been for the last several years. The general formula has been a minimum of $25 a head for the last few years. So that one's probably not too bad either. The projected increase in unrestricted general government aid, who knows? I mean, that, that's a little more volatile generally. So, I mean, there's a reasonable expectation that some of this will come back. We'll get better information when the House budget comes out, still better when the Senate budget comes out. But we'll really know, as far as our budget goes, by the first week in May because that's when town meeting is going to vote our budget. So, I mean, it's, you know, at, at that point, we'll, we'll know what we have for next year. Even if, in, if in fact, the, the state budget isn't being passed by that point, which very well may not be, we'll be working on at least, you know, better data as to what the likely local aid is and so forth. And so it'll be a refining process. I said, you know, as I say, the, the warrant for town meeting hasn't gone to press yet. There'll probably be some, some modifications between now and then. But really, it's, you know, that, that first week in May when we, when we have town meeting that we'll have a, a reasonable idea where this is.
But just, just to be clear for the committee and for the people watching at home, with the exception of Chapter 70, $275,000 to Milton doesn't necessarily mean $275,000 to the schools.
Ms. Kelly?
So you may be surprised to hear me say this, but I would much prefer the order go back to the way it was before with the music, art at the middle school, high school being above the world language. If one was to look at the amount of resources that this district spends on world language versus all the others, I mean, there is, there's no comparison. I think to, to say potentially that all those particular classes are going to be cut back, as well as business, tech, family, and consumer science, I just think I would recommend that that order be changed.
Is that a motion?
Can I ask a question first?
Yes.
The world language at the high school, Mary, what was that? What is that class? Is it the honor Spanish?
It's going to be Spanish and then it's going to have impact on advanced placement classes across, possible impact on advanced placement across.
French.
French, oh, excuse me. French. And then impact on advanced placement in, we're not sure in which languages.
You'd be impacting the non-immersion French classes at the high school. And so what that will do is shift students who want to start a language at the high school into other languages. And it'll force a bump around the world language continuum there. And we would have to see what courses were on the low end of, of usage and make cuts depending on that. You can't, for instance, cut French II necessarily because if you've got a sophomore who's taking French. French II, they can't start Spanish I in their junior year and make three years of a language, which is what most colleges are looking for. So you've got to be careful how you eliminate things and phase it through. So although we talk about it as a French cut, it will have ripples into the other languages.
Yes, and can I follow up?
Absolutely.
And I'm sure you all know by now that, you know, how I feel about art and music and where I want it to be. My concern about the world language is, I remember years ago when that first started happening, the honors levels and the AP, honors level Spanish were incredibly crowded. There weren't even enough seats in the room, and that just felt so unfair to me. And that did continue for a while. So if it means, I don't, it's between a rock and a hard place, I guess.
Right. There's no right answer to this in terms of the order, but I think the feedback that we got from parents was precisely that, that these AP classes are important, that the impact that this one change would have across the AP classes was significant, and they urged us to be mindful of that. So I...
So I'll make the motion to reverse the order between the arts, music, business, tech, family, consumers for 1.4 with the world language. So it would become, the art and music, et cetera, would become number three, and the world language become number four.
Well, I'll second it.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it. Sorry.
Moved by Ms. Kelly. So this is a motion to amend the list. Moved by Ms. Kelly, seconded by Ms. Bagley-Jones. Discussion?
So, can I, I'm just looking for a little bit more specifics on, it says, middle school art, music, computer, high school art, music, computer. Do we know what courses we're talking, are they eliminating courses, are they just reducing?
It would be the elimination of courses, and those students would go into other electives, which would increase the numbers in those other electives.
Do we know what courses would be eliminating?
No, they're, no.
Just, we would look at the least, you know...
And it would have impact on having to let those teachers go, repost the positions for .8, and those teachers probably, in all reality, would seek positions elsewhere. They're all successful in those disciplines. And then to fill a .8 position, have explained to the public and to the school committee, people don't take part-time at .8 teaching positions until the end of the summer or Labor Day.
So...
So it's absolutely the elimination in every one of those disciplines of one of the course options.
Courses, and then so then the other side of things with the high school world language, what that would be is possibly eliminating the ability for some students to take three years of one language possibly, and then they would not be eligible for certain colleges that they're applying to. That's what we could be talking about.
And remember, I said to the finance subcommittee, to Chairman Walker's point, they're all very, very involved, and that's a very involved kind of reduction, too.
Ms. Kelly?
So just to be clear, on the middle, high school art/ music, we're talking about seven teachers that potentially will say, "I'm not going to be working here anymore." And then you're going to have to try and fill a .8 for each of those positions.
Yes, that's already happened. And so to bring it back for somebody just viewing, when we started this process, we brought each individual in because we have a reduction in force list, and so these individuals have been spoken to by their administrators or myself, and then we did a full presentation for the entire staff. That's right, that's to Mrs. Kelly's point, it's seven people.
Ms. Downs?
Sorry. It's all confusing to the audience. The order on the handout is different from the order on the screen?
No, I think we gave up...
New handout.
You're the only one that didn't get one.
Sorry.
Thank you. So I guess I would say, as much as I, I would remain concerned about the higher-level Spanish classes and the Latin and the other things, but that the art and the music, and the computers especially for kids in this day and age, if it's that many staff and that many courses, I mean, I hope we don't get to this point, but if we do, I guess I would go with seeing those higher than, on the replacement list, higher than the world language, even though that would concern me as well. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the two different lists, just like Laura said.
The one that says revised.
Right. So the parents, you're saying, some parents said the world language should be second on the list versus the music and art. Is that correct?
Well, they didn't say it should be second on the list. They said, "Here's why we think this is something that you should give serious consideration to."
And if I can just ask another question, but the music, art, computers, that involves the seven teachers?
Yes.
Okay. So for me, that would go above the world language.
And that's why you seconded the motion, I believe?
Yes.
Well, she did that to be nice.
I did, because I'm sitting next to Mary.
She wasn't sold on it.
No, I feel, I feel both sides. I do.
Mr. Zulus?
I have a question of the administration. I think that the chair well articulated what the feedback was for the parents. Is there any additional rationale from the administration for having world language other than what's already been discussed here? Having world language above these electives?
No.
Good to know.
Shortest answer of the night.
Ms. Sheridan?
So there was a document that was emailed to us, the adjustments to the cut list. It was from you, Dr. Pavlicek, and I think that that really clearly articulated it, and I don't know if everyone, if the, if the public is going to see that, just kind of the explanation of why these cuts were reordered. So I think you've said it, but I think for people looking at it, it's hard to see the numbers. I mean, it's easy to see the numbers, but not the explanation isn't there. The explanation was in a backup document that wasn't attached to this, but was emailed out to the school committee, so I just wanted to say that. And I support the recommendation of Mrs. Kelly.
On the motion to amend the restoration priorities list to flip priorities three and four, all in favor? Order two. Walker and Zulus against.
Thank you.
And so to put, this is an active list, so now my interpretation is that you'll work with the warrant committee and we'll be contacted, and this is really what we're living by, day by day.
Right.
Thank you. Going on, the school committee had asked for an update on our family outreach liaison hire through the advancement budget. In your packet, you were given a piece from Ms. Marty O'Keefe McKenna. I want, this will be posted tomorrow. I just want to highlight, you heard Ms. Buchanan use the word fabulous. Ms. McKenna, O'Keefe McKenna, has extended herself to the Milton Public Schools. She was hired as the parent liaison to really work with our preschool initiative, our kindergarten and our first grades, and she has extended herself across the district, but been integral to the preschool initiative at the Tucker, making contact with all of the families, doing the outreach of who would be involved in the program, partnering with the teacher, the principal, the registration process. I want to recognize Ms. McKenna in that she has been integral in, we presented, I think one of the accomplishments of this year is to bring all of these preschool programs together, driven by the school committee's interest and advocacy for preschool. Ms. McKenna has really almost personally had conversations with every preschool, parent registering, kindergarten registrations, and first grade registrations. You can see the numbers, over 400 families have expressed interest in registering in all of these programs, and she is, in addition to the individuals at central office, being the face of the Milton Public Schools. Events, Ms. McKenna has extended herself to over 25 Milton Public School evening events from open houses to the STEM information night, and she is just not an attendee at these events. She reaches out to families, she informs families of the events. Next, you'll see that over 40 families have, she has reached out to over 40 new families to really help them in a myriad of needs that they might have in the district, everything from transportation to athletics, to homework, to liaising with families. Teachers and administrators have, she has made, there have been 30 referrals directly to her from individuals, staff members, administrators and teachers, as I said, to her, to reach out to parents. In the registration, she's helped us in the preschool conferences, she's been integral in conferencing. She was very active through the fall and the spring conference schedule, making sure that families were notified, and if they couldn't come at the assigned times, setting them up. She's extended herself from the food pantry to the Milton residence, you can read the list yourselves. She's, she worked through the holiday season with organizations that wanted to reach out to the Milton Public Schools. Our calculus project at the high school has a requirement really of parental involvement, and she has worked with the teachers and administrators to strengthen those parent liaisons. And my personal thanks to her goes to, in the youth sports, I want to bring you back to Milton Youth Soccer, reached out to the Milton Public Schools in a partnership to diversify the participation in Milton Youth Soccer, and Ms. McKenna really partnered with Milton Youth Soccer to make the participation more reflective of the diversity in our community. And so I think that her report to you supports your advancement position, and to hear Alyssa Buchanan unsolicited use the word, she's been fabulous partnering with her extending out to, and partnering with parents of children new to the district. Any questions on Marty McKenna?
Bagley-Jones?
I have a quick question. This is great, Mary, to get this kind of report, and she clearly, I've run into her at different events, and she's clearly done a great job. It might be helpful as we go forward in terms of funding and possible grants, to have a little more of a track and referral, what are the kind of referrals we're doing, how many. Positions like this often can be the first on the chopping block, and sometimes the data behind it can make a connection to the academic need, the family needs and the academic needs.
Excellent. And she has done a tremendous amount of that documentation.
I just want to know it's being done, so if we need it, we can pull it out, because you couldn't submit this in a grant.
Yeah, I asked her only for a summary, but I can give you that in backup information.
Yeah, so it's there. This is great, though, she's doing a fabulous job.
I think it's an impressive list. I think for the '15, '16 school year, it would be helpful, since we had some very specific objectives in creating the position, that we start that year with some specific objectives going forward for what we'd like to accomplish.
Next on the agenda, we submitted, there's been a lot of discussion about the weather and the snow. And so we talked at the last meeting about our 15, our 14, 15 calendar, and there will be no more snow, and we're all set, and we have, we're in a good place. And so I submitted a calendar to you for the '15, '16 school year that, you're laughing that I said no more snow? And so, you're disappointed. The '15, '16 school year. And so I have received feedback from families and tremendous amount of information from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the commissioner. And some individuals have asked about thinking about eliminating February and April and making a March vacation week, but with the new implementation of PARC, which I've given you the schedule in your green folders, it really, PARC is administered during the entire month of March. We've been asked to look at the religious holidays, and so I've asked the chair if I, in my email blast tomorrow, we're going to survey the community. We had anticipated putting a new calendar in front of you, but I've heard that from other communities that there was tremendous pushback when the parents and guardians weren't surveyed. So we're going to learn from other communities, and we're going to survey our parents and guardians about an edited '15, '16 school year and on April 1st. Based on their response, bring you a proposal. Again, every day is valuable, because remember, next year, since all of you probably don't have that calendar memorized, we begin school, we're very fortunate that we begin before Labor Day. She must be thinking about us tonight, prior Superintendent Jafun really led that as one of the first districts to start school before Labor Day. The commissioner is urging every school district to now do that, because he is not going to give people waivers to go to school less than 180 days. Am I right, Dr. Pavlicek, Commissioner? And so we're in good straits there, but the commissioner is encouraging districts to look at their school calendar, consider religious holidays, and starting, but next year, you start school in September. Labor Day is really late, and that really then pushes the end of school later into June. So we're going to survey, send a survey out tomorrow on my email blast, and perhaps bring you an edited '15, '16 calendar at your, April 1st.
So I've suggested to the superintendent, you're going to hear in a few minutes about a recommendation from the Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee regarding a survey of parents, so I've suggested to the superintendent, so as not to inundate parents with surveys, that we combine those in the same e-blast.
And I actually think that our survey came first, so...
Oh, boy. Well, since it's my email blast, we'll see who goes first.
Bagley-Jones?
Mary, I just have a question about that, or a request. Could you reiterate in like three bullet points on your survey or on your email blast what we can and cannot do, because the viewing public just really, so many comments and emails about it, and there's just some real misinformation out there.
Right. I will put it all out, the commissioner has made himself very clear, and everything we can do, we're doing.
Right. But if you could just reiterate it in bullet points everywhere you go, that would be helpful.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Kelly?
With Mr. Zulus's survey, will there be a video or music or anything that goes along with it?
No.
Just asking.
No.
Just wondering why in, I don't want to start anything here, but why half-day on Good Friday and why go-to-school on Yom Kippur? Why not handle them both the same?
That, yes, that's what I'm going to survey.
I'm sorry?
That memo I put to you, and I was going to bring you an edited, but tomorrow I'm going to be asking what options people want.
Got it. So a whole...
Yes.
Got it. Great.
We learned that from other school districts who didn't ask the parents and guardians.
Happening.
And very quickly, I was away on a family vacation. Who does any member want to tell about? I don't think we can thank the MFE enough, recognize Marion Roll and Karen Viveras and every single individual who participated, donated, attended, but does somebody want to give a brief update of MFE's STEAM celebration?
I will.
As the school committee representative to the MFE, that's an excellent idea.
It was fantastic, and I think I said to all of you that the funniest moment was definitely with Dr. Spalding, but I'm not going to share that story, because it was just, you had to kind of be there, but she was the best comedian of the night. I think she kind of stole the show, her and her significant other, because they purchased, I think, several weeks of Patriots tickets, which I'm not sure Dr. Spalding had agreed to in the beginning. But I'm not sure, I'd love to hear later how they did on the, is it the Star Lab they're trying to do, the specific...
It's almost full funding.
Yeah, I mean, there was extreme excitement over that, and I think a lot of people participated in helping fund that. It was a great night, as usual, MFE sold out, and the room was just largely filled with a lot of really happy and energetic people about the night. So I think that Marion Roll and Karen Viveros... So I think that Marion Ruhl and Karen Viveras did a great job, they were cool as cucumbers, and everything went exactly as they thought it would.
I wasn't there, but of course, I'll have a story. I came in Monday, and Principal, Milton High School Principal James Jet said to me, he, three times in the morning, "I had a great time." So I said, "You had a, what does that mean, a great time on Saturday night at a school event celebration?" And he said, "I had a great time." So I think that speaks to celebration, and on behalf of the Milton Public Schools and the partnership with the MFE, we really couldn't go on and on enough about it.
Can I say one more thing, too? Because this was right before that big event started, we had several of our students representing with Dr. Noreen Burdette that gave a performance that really was probably the only time that the event was quiet, because, you know, people like to talk at these things, but they were just so stunning, their performance was just so unbelievable, that everybody was just quiet and, you know, just, it was just breathtaking. So as usual, they're our best ambassadors to what we do in the school, I think it was really, really wonderful.
Well, I think Marion Ruhl and Karen Viveras, when they were planning the event, they asked for students to speak to technology, part of STEAM in the Milton Public Schools, and the need for technology, and the two musical presentations, and student greeters at the door. So every year, this event changes, and important to them, when they partner with us, they wanted student representation at the event.
I was just going to add, the student speakers that spoke about the need for technology in addition to the entertainment, they were so articulate and so, oh, vibrant, like they just totally knew that, that their experiences in Milton Public Schools were enriched by the technology that was offered to them, and it was very exciting to hear and see. And also, there were some nice awards given out to several alums, and recognized some couples in the community that have been outstanding advocates for us as well, so that was a nice addition.
I said to the Superintendent, I actually said to James Jet that night, for me, these students were the highlight of the evening. They are our best advertisement. It was, I was very proud.
Thank you. Very briefly, talking about technology, where began this week, our PARC testing across the district as a result of our partnership with MFE and the Copeland Foundation with the infrastructure, the Milton Public School budget, the capital budget, the MFE celebration last year, and a tremendous amount of work led by Dr. Pavlicek and Assistant Superintendent Janet Sheehan with our PARC team. They are right there to troubleshoot any issues that happen. Students are on the, in the labs and on the Chromebooks, and you haven't begun at the high school yet. No, but the elementary began, and it was, all of your preparation was flawless, and we have begun the PARC testing. And I have to tell you, an individual came to me, and the way that I felt about this was, PARC test, the PARC testing is coming, and everybody understands that it's a rollout, and some districts chose MCAS, but they'll be doing PARC. And an individual came to me today and said what I felt, our children, Milton's children and students weren't left behind, and there's no reason, if this is going to be the testing in the next century, our students are immersed in it, our teachers have been trained, and again, there was a level of calmness across the district, but excellent anticipation, and they were prepared. So we're in the midst of the PARC testing. We're also in the midst, if you would go to our website, if you have children the age of preschool, kindergarten, or first grade, we're in the midst of that registration, I would ask you to check those dates. Tomorrow night, any parent of a rising sixth grader, parents of current fifth graders who are going to be sixth graders next year, I will remind you that tomorrow is the Pierce School Fifth Grade Information Night at seven o'clock in the Pierce Auditorium. A special reminder that this Friday, the MFE Teacher of the Year Award nomination forms are due to your school principals or offices. On the 24th, our CPAC has asked me to remind everyone, Tuesday, the 24th, the CPAC presentation, they have Dr. Annie Curry in the Pierce School Auditorium at seven o'clock on student anxiety. The CPAC has put a tremendous amount of work into identifying this speaker, and they're very proud to be sponsoring this night. On March 25th, the Milton High School Program of Studies will happen in the Charles Winchester Auditorium at six o'clock. Little bit of, very good news, a few points, the next meeting will be bringing our Globes, Elastic, and Music winners, and perhaps our tournament players from the teams, but a personal favorite of the superintendents is our Future Problem Solving Program. And so, our teams from the elementary and Pierce went to Canton High School and competed, and I'm proud to announce to you that at Pierce, Zoe Malouf, Dominique Thomas, who I think her mother may have been in the audience waiting for this announcement, but had to get home to check her homework, and Claire Walco are competing, are moving to the state level. We also have individual students who are going to have asked if they can compete individually. I think that is the ultimate testimony to their dedication to the program. At the Cunningham Team, Baron Clancy, Anna Hamblett, Anderson Corman, and Mary McLeod, you know two of those individuals from the last meeting, are moving to the state level. And the Glove Team, Hadley Blazdel, Aura Bouchot, and Ian Lundin are moving to the state level. So that was an email in the middle of the night last night, Laurie Henry, Bill Bano, who works part-time in the program, and Nicole Hasinas, her name, I didn't pronounce her name correctly, Pierce School teacher, those teams are moving, they'll be going on April 11th to Mass Maritime Academy, and they'll stop preparing, doing the research now to compete at the state level. And remember, twice, we've sent teams of students to the national competitions. Very, very exciting.
Can I ask a question?
Anything.
When's the anxiety presentation?
Very good to repeat that. On Wednesday, is Wednesday, March 24th? No, is that a Tuesday or Wednesday?
I thought it said Tuesday.
Tuesday, thank you.
Right. And the reason I was asking is that it's not just for...
Student anxiety.
Right. It's not just for kids with special needs, it's for, and anxiety is the highest level of a mental health issue for kids these days, so lots of parents.
It would be nice to be able to fill the Pierce School Auditorium at seven o'clock on March 24th with parents and guardians of citizens, and the CPAC has done a tremendous amount of work researching that speaker, and they're very proud to be sponsoring that night. Thank you.
Can I just ask one follow-up on the PARC? Seeing that the entire test now is online, essentially, are the results expected to act faster?
Well, I'm going to, did you say yes?
Interesting.
So we, well, to say this, I never want to say anything that I'm not sure about when we're at a school committee meeting. So we believe, what, do you have?
So you don't want to break that rule now.
Right. So Ms. Kelly, a report out at the next meeting when the results are going to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, as I mentioned, we've received a couple of communications from the Mass Association of School Committees regarding designating MASC as a representative for the specific purpose of arbitrations and receiving arbitration decisions. The reason that they've asked us to do this, and the reason that I think it makes sense, is because, as they explain in this rather lengthy text here, the unions are either statewide or national organizations, and as such, have access to a much larger library of arbitration decisions. The designation of an arbitrator is an important decision to make, because the way that that decision gets made is you look at the arbitrator's previous decisions, and how he might decide, he or she might decide, in order to try to predict whether he will support the position that you have before him or her or not. So what MASC has proposed is that they will help us to create this broader library of arbitration decisions. So I've also talked with Joe Emerson, our Labor Council, he thinks that this is a good idea, so I have a motion to make such a designation. Any questions?
So this is just in terms of arbitration, not?
Specifically just for arbitration.
Yeah, arbitration, okay.
Yes.
And why wouldn't we do this?
I don't see any reason not to do it.
Thank you.
So the motion, yeah?
I was just going to ask if you made the motion, I wasn't clear if that was the motion.
Here it comes.
Okay.
I move that we designate the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Inc., as one of Milton School Committees' representatives pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter 150-E, Section 1, for the particular purpose of selecting an arbitrator and receiving arbitration decisions.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Sheridan. Ms. Kelly?
Do they charge us more for this?
No.
That's great. Fabulous.
Be charged.
Good question.
On the motion, all in favor? It's unanimous. Finance Subcommittee?
Yes, we have an approval of a vendor warrant, Dr. Pavlicek.
We have tonight vendor warrant number 38, dated March 19th, 2015, in the amount of $428,452.62.
So I would move approval of warrant number 38 in an amount of $428,452.62.
Second. Moved by Kelly, seconded by Walker. On the motion, all in favor? opposed, abstain? 402, Zulus and Kelly abstaining. Transportation and Traffic Safety Subcommittee?
Yes. So this is by means of an update, and a recommendation, a voted recommendation which occurred on Monday evening, and that's when we recommended, as you'll hear, our survey that we suggest for parents and guardians. First, just a quick, let me get my folder, a quick update. What we're in the process of doing is identifying the issues in transportation and traffic safety for each of the schools. We have not collected all, all of the issues yet for all of the schools, so we're in that process, and we're trying to segregate those issues by global issues and specific issues. As specific issues have come up, we've tried to deal with them. For example, as of March 9th, the alert system for bus issues changed, and Jake Smith was, changed that alert system. In the past, when the alerts went out, and there was a bus issue, all of the parents throughout the district received that alert. Now those alerts are going to be targeted just for the parents and guardians for that specific bus. So for all those parents and guardians, you might want to update the, what you have, what the schools have in terms of how they contact you, if you have a cell phone, because if you're at the bus stop, you might want that alert to come to your cell phone as opposed to your home phone or to your, to your email. So that's, so that's a, hopefully, an improvement. And second, and this is what, well, what the presentation is, what we're, what we're looking at now, and we don't have music tonight.
But you have neon yellow.
The Chair is correct. That, we don't have music, and that was really because it was a time issue, and so, anyone, anyone here wants to take a moment and just get in their head Katrina and the Waves, Walking on Sunshine, and if you want to hum it to yourself during the presentation, then it may go a lot more smoothly.
And we're sending out a public appeal for anyone with PowerPoint skills to contact Mr. Zulus.
That would be much of...
Graphics and sound.
That would be much appreciated. So, so anyway, what we're doing in terms of walking assessment, we're working with Safe Routes to School, Jana Lindhart is on our committee from the Mass Department of Transportation, let me see if I click this correctly. Oh, got it. So again, who we are, committee charged by this committee, a subcommittee charged by this committee comprised of now myself and Ms. Bagley Jones, to the extent that she is able to...
Can I just say, because I feel bad, we were supposed to meet on Thursdays, and Jane could only come on Mondays, and I have a class on Mondays, and she's much more of a valuable person than I am on that particular committee. So that's why I can't be there.
Kristen graciously deferred for our...
You'd better have Jane.
I didn't say that.
No, I do.
I didn't say that.
Thank you.
So Glenn Pavlicek, Jake Smith, and one parent from each of the elementary schools and the middle school appointed by the PTO presidents are charged, as you may or may not remember, to coordinate development of solutions to safety, transportation and safety issues with Milton Police Department, Public Works, Traffic Commission, Town Administrator. That is the effort that we're undergoing now to kind of come up with a, an exhaustive list of what the issues are, and then figure out, to figure out where we need to target those efforts, and what department we should go to. In the meantime, we have been looking at reviewing walking and biking enhancements. As you know, traffic congestion, as most people know, traffic congestion is an issue in most of the schools, so if we can create a culture and enhance more biking and walking to the schools, then that would help congestion. To that end, the Safe Routes to School, Mass Department of Transportation is assisting us in doing walking assessments. The, the goal of the walking assessments is to come up with safe routes and identified safe routes for people to, for, for students and parents and guardians to walk, and to, to come together in what they call walking school buses, where maybe there may be one parent or guardian in neighborhood who is able to walk the students, and if they all know about it, then all of those students can congregate in one area, and they can all walk to school, as opposed to maybe, you know, four, or five, or six, or seven, or eight cars driving those school, driving those students to school before they, before they rush off to work. So, so if we can, if we can create these routes, the safe routes, and these would, again, these would be created, working with Safe Routes to School, working with the Police Department, working with the other interested parties, then we will help, I think, engender this culture of walking and biking. What we've done so far is, Safe Routes has, has taken all of the residences at the different schools and created residence maps, and this will assist in, in, in developing the safe routes. So we, for each of the schools, we have, the Department of Transportation has created these maps to show where the concentrations of students are in the different, for each of the four elementary schools and the middle school. And the next step to that is our travel survey. And that survey is a very simple survey, we would be assisted with, assisted by Department of Transportation in doing it, there would be no charge for it, the survey could be done online, or we're, we're going to also have handouts to go in the students' backpacks as well, so the parents can either fill out the survey, and as you see, it's a very simple one-page survey. What we get as a result, if we get parents to, to fill out the survey, and also, I might mention, there is a $250 bonus to the school that fills out the most surveys. So, but, but it's not for the parent to spend themselves, it's for the schools to spend on biking or walking efforts. So, so the parents, it's a one-page survey, very simple. What we get is a report such as this, this was for Greenfield, I think, and they used the information from the parent guardian survey to develop this report showing all the statistics for student proximity to schools, student travel choices, and how they could, how their school compares, and how they could enhance walking and biking for their school system. So we fill out the surveys, we may get the gift card, the school that fills out the most may get the gift card, and then we get a report about what is happening now in the school system. And then, oh, this is, yeah, this is just the end of the, end of the report. So, based on... of the report. So based on all that, we recommend, the school, our subcommittee has recommended that the superintendent and the Department Director of Transportation coordinate with the principals of the elementary schools and the middle school to participate in this survey by sending an email to all parents with the hyperlink to the survey and hard copies in the student backpacks. Our recommendation was to, to get this out before, before school vacation, so we could make use of it, and with a goal toward, to developing the safe routes, the safe walking routes, hopefully by the end of this year, so we can have something in place by the beginning of next year. And so our hope is to send out a notice during the week of March 30th or before, to the extent the superintendent can, can do that. And then the survey would be open online and through the forums would be open from April 3rd through the 17th. Our recommendation is also that this, this be, the survey be conducted in the spring and the fall because travel changes. And so you get better data and better analysis if you know what students and parents and guardians are doing in the, in the spring and in the fall. So that is our, those are our efforts on student or biking and walking to school.
Ms. Bagley Jones?
I just wanna point out that a lot of these things come from Jana, John, however you say her name, who replaced me, and much more. I could never have done any of that. But she was on our Health and Wellness Committee as well, and I said, "Could you come to this instead?" Because this clearly is so helpful to us. And I'm just so impressed with all the work that you guys have done, and I am very sorry I'm not there. But clearly, I could help you with the PowerPoints, but other than that, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job, and it's much appreciated.
Well, thank you to Ms. Bagley Jones for referring Jana, and thank you to Mr. Zulus for the work that Subcommittee's doing. It's good that we're seeing some results. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you very much for this presentation. Just wondering, so does the Safe Walk to Schools, whatever the organization is, do they coordinate with the police department? And, because ultimately, you know, how we got here, I think, granted, I think there've been individual efforts at Glover School, but how we got here was because people in East Milton were concerned about how to get their kids to school safely.
People in various parts of town.
I'm sorry?
People in various...
I'm sorry, but, but I think before us was East Milton, but, but it brought up issues around town, correct. So will the product of this process produce those sort of safe routes that we're talking about for everybody, or is it, is that another part of what you're working on?
For, for everybody, and you mean each school, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the intention. The intention is to come up, the, the, the goal is at some point to have a, to have a, a page on the Milton Public Schools website where parents, that says, "Here are the safe walking, safe walking routes." Click on it, click on the school, "Here are the safe walking routes." And, and beyond that, maybe, "Here are the places, here are the, the neighborhoods where there are walking bus, you know, walking buses that can congregate." So, so that's the goal. To get there, the idea is to come up with what we think the safe walking routes are for, for each school. And I'm not entirely clear on what, you know, how we're gonna do, how we're gonna coordinate that. All I know is that, that Safe Roots, Jana, has committed to working with us and working, we mentioned, working with the police department, and working with the schools, and working with the parents, to figure out, and actually walking the routes. I mean, actually walking the routes and figuring that out. So, so that's gonna, that's gonna take some coordination. We need to get the, kind of the background data first, and then we need to coordinate and figure out what those routes are, or what, what the consensus is about, you know, what the routes are for Glover, what the routes are for Cali-Cotton, how to, and, and in addition to that, maybe how to enhance them as well. And that'll be additions.
Great.
The, the only thing I would add to that is that if we think about the list of issues that we heard from parents across town, I think that Safe Roots may help with some solutions to some of those issues. But I, I still think there will be traffic issues that have to be reviewed with the police chief, Traffic Commission, that Safe Roots is not gonna be able to help with.
I have, actually, I have one, one final thing and announcement. There is, and this is in connection with the Safe Roots grant for the, improving the infrastructure at the intersection of Brook and Canton for the Glover School. There is pending an $875,000 grant that we heard about a few months ago for that, renovating that intersection to make it more walker and biker friendly. And the Milton Department of Public Works is hosting a second public design meeting at the Glover, for that grant, for the Glover School Safe Roots to School project on Thursday, March 26th, at 6:30 at the Glover Elementary School. And so if there are parents out there who are interested in this project and supportive of this project, particularly, or not supportive, but the, the Mass. Department of Transportation would like to know, and they'd like to hear whether this, whether this, that there is, whether there's support for spending this money on this project. So if there are interested parents in using these funds to improve that, that intersection, the, the, the meeting is Thursday, March 26th, at 6:30 at the Glover Elementary School.
And Mr. Zulus, I, I would underscore what, what you've said about if there are people who are supportive. I did get a chance to talk with the individuals, the project manager at DOT. The first meeting there was quite a bit of opposition from neighbors, and less support from, there were less people who were there who were supporting the public schools and the need for this. And he made clear that this is a grant, and if it doesn't go to us, it'll go to someone else. So this is the chance to, to make clear that we do support this, and we would like for that to happen.
Yep.
And continuing with the Mike Zulus Show, we have Policy Subcommittee.
Da-da-da-da.
All right, well...
What color is this one?
No, there's no presentation. This was hot off the presses, hot off the presses. And I apologize for not passing out a draft earlier, but this was just recommended by our Policy Subcommittee. Mary has a copy, so that's for Kristin, and that's for you, Laura.
Oh.
So the Policy Subcommittee has met twice and met this, this evening on the domestic violence leave policy. And we are recommending that, that the policy that you have before you be approved, subject to the review by Labor Council, because there is an additional, there's an additional leave aspect to this, and we wanna make sure that there are no labor issues that would, that would arise as a result of it. So what we recommend is that we, if, if, if the committee agrees, is that we do a first read tonight, and we can wa, can walk you through what this is very briefly. And, and then by the next meeting, hopefully, we will have heard from Labor Council, and he will have signed off on it, and then we can do a second read. So if, if that is acceptable.
See.
All right. So the domestic violence leave policy that you have before you arose from a new statute in Massachusetts that was enacted last August, and it created this, this leave policy that gives an employee up to 15 days of domestic violence leave from work in any 12-month period. The leave policy that you have before you tracks the statute in most, really, in all, in most ways. There are a couple of things that I would point out to you that, that are open issues. Excuse me. If you look at the second paragraph after Roman at 3 on the first page, where it says, "An employee shall exhaust all available paid leave prior to requesting or taking domestic violence leave," period. "After the employee's available paid leave is exhausted, any domestic violence leave granted will be unpaid leave." So that is one, that is one way to do it. And that is one suggested way to do it, and it's within the statute. And it is, it is the, is the recommendation of the Policy Subcommittee, with input from the superintendent, that, that we go that route. The alternative is to give the superintendent, or the employer, the schools here discretion to determine whether the leave would be unpaid or unpaid, paid or unpaid. So we would, we would be delegating that, that determination to the employer here, which is the Milton Public Schools. And so that's one issue, whether you're gonna give the discretion to the schools here to determine whether that leave will be paid or unpaid. Here, the Policy Subcommittee is suggesting that we don't give that discretion, again, with input from the superintendent, that that, that leave be unpaid. Second, the, the, an alternative is to give the employer, the schools, the opportunity to waive the requirement that the paid, that the, that the leave be granted after any available paid leave is already exhausted. In other words, vacation, sick days, personal days. Right now, what, what we're recommending is that this leave would be after all that other leave is exhausted. The alternative language is to give the employer the opportunity to waive that requirement, the employer, again, being the schools. So those are two issues that, that have been pointed out by MASC. You can either give the discretion to the schools to make it paid or unpaid, and to, to waive the requirement, or not. So those are two things that I would point out to you for your consideration as you, as you think about this over the next, over the next few weeks.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So the discretion around unpaid or paid, you talk about the employee's paid leave is exhausted. So you're saying if their leave is exhausted, the school could say, "We'll still pay you after your leave is exhausted"?
No, I, I, maybe I wasn't clear. So, so, no, there, there are really two issues, right? The first sentence really relates to exhausting all your leave prior to taking this leave, right? And whether you're gonna, whether you're gonna give the schools the opportunity to waive that requirement, that all your leave be exhausted. So you, so you separate your mind, the, the exhausting, your existing paid leave, and then the, whether it's gonna be paid or unpaid, paid or unpaid leave. And the second sentence relates to the, the paid or unpaid leave, and whether you're gonna give the school system or the employer the discretion to make it paid or unpaid. That wasn't really clear, was it? All right, let me try again. Let me try again.
Can I, I just, so what you have before you is what our recommendation is?
Right.
In consult, consultation with the superintendent. There are decision points that we basically are saying, "This is the way we think it should go," right?
Right.
So I, so in the first is, as you described. So what's in the, written in the document right now is how we think it should read?
My question, or my concern, is around the available paid leave, unavailable leave. If somebody is in this situation, I would like it to be where they wouldn't have to worry about using any leave or being able to access pay, because they're gonna be in a really bad situation if they need this.
Right.
So, in other words, if somebody had, they can use any paid leave that they have.
Right.
Or is this saying 15 days? That's where I don't understand. It says up to 15 days of domestic violence leave.
Right.
So up to 15 days, but it's not that they can take 30. Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, what, I think, I think what we're saying is that the, the, the employee has to exhaust their existing paid leave before they access this.
Okay, so...
And then the alternative is to give the super, give the school system the opportunity to waive that requirement. Okay? That's the alternative language.
Ms. Sheridan?
I should know the answer to this question, but I, I don't. Do we, in the Milton Public Schools, have a, a sick bank or a bank that teachers can, you know, donate a day to every year, and then, so if we do, would this fall under that purview in addition? I mean, I know that that's used, you have to apply for that, correct?
It's a good question. I wouldn't think so, because that's not part of the employee's paid leave. So I wouldn't think so. It, it, it's probably a good question, just to confirm with Labor Council, but I wouldn't think so. I mean...
I, I don't think we wanna go on the record on that answer right, just yet. I think we should confer with Labor Council. That's a very good question.
It might be for consideration, that's all.
Yeah.
And if it were for consideration, I think there should be a, an end number, you know, that you couldn't, you couldn't request an open-ended amount of days, you know, justified.
So I'm, I'm clear on why we wouldn't want to create another paid leave benefit. So I get that one. I'm not clear on why, why it's important to require that all the other leave be exhausted before they could use this leave. We have a domestic violence situation, employee says, "I, I need to be out. I'd rather use my unpaid leave than my paid leave." Why, why would we, why, why would that be a problem for us? Why wouldn't we want that discretion?
Well, I think, and I don't know how many days are involved, but on a typical...
Let's say it's up to 15.
But that's just for this. So if you've already been out of the classroom, let's say you're a classroom teacher, for whatever amount of days you have, your personal days, your sick days, et cetera, whatever, I don't know how many days that is. This is saying you can go 15 beyond that unpaid, and, and then you've sort of exhausted all of your out-of-the-classroom time, I think, is what we're saying. And I, and Superintendent, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's sort of the, what we were bringing to it, was I think we were trying to look at it from the sit, obviously, we're concerned about individuals, but we're also concerned about impact on classrooms, I think. Is that correct, Kristen?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I, I understand, but I'm, this is a domestic violence situation we're talking about. I just, I'm, if, if it's an actual domestic violence situation, I just don't, I, I, I don't understand why we wouldn't say, "Okay." The question is, you need to be out. There's no question you need to be out. Leave, whether the leave should be paid or unpaid, or whether it, I, if I've used all my other leave, then I can take it as unpaid, but I can't take it as unpaid before I do that. I just, I'm not following the logic there, but...
I agree with you wholeheartedly. I think that, you know, if you're going to, if you need to be out for this purpose, then you should be able to go without saying, "I'm gonna use up all my other days." So say, for example, this situation would happen in October. You would leave that person with no sick time or personal time for the remainder of the year, I'm playing it outright, and at the same time, they would have then lost their oppo, I mean, this would be the opportunity to take advantage of the leave as it's needed. But you might still need sick days throughout the course of the year, or personal days. So I agree with Mr. Walker. I'm, I'm just not, I'm not 100% sure why you would mandate that they use a sick...
So you're opposing that it'd also be paid?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's unpaid, okay.
That we should have the discretion to waive the requirement, that it be, all of the paid leave be used before they use the unpaid leave. And I would just underscore, these are situations that are usually beyond the individual's control.
Right.
And so that would, that would give the, that would give the schools a discretion to waive the requirement?
Well, I'd give the superintendent the discretion. I wouldn't, I wouldn't disperse it.
So the superintendent would, would have to, would, I guess, review it on a case-by-case, I'm just thinking about the specifics in mind. Superintendent would review it on a case-by-case basis, case-by-case basis, and determine whether to, whether to waive the requirement.
Well, if you wanted to be clear, I would say that in, in every domestic violence case, the individual, the individual should be able to choose whether they wish to use paid or unpaid leave. So we, we don't need to... So we don't need to bother with case-by-case reviews. If it's determined that it's a domestic violence situation, then my recommendation would be the individual could choose based on their own circumstances.
Mm-hmm. I agree. It's up there, Mike. It's going to be a long pause.
Oh, no, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking about the scenarios, I'm not, I'm not going to say--
All right, we're all--
No, no, no. No, no, I'm just, I'm just thinking. Glenn has--
Just a question, again, to think of for Labor Council. We have collective bargaining agreements that in many cases say sick time is for the benefit only of the employee during sickness. And where a school policy might be in conflict with the, with the language of a labor agreement, it'd have to say, could you actually enforce that they would have to take sick days, exhaust them before they went on a leave? And I just think that's, I think that's a really bad idea.
That's why I said, I don't want to be on record here. I don't want to have that discussion on the record.
We have a lot, there'd be a lot of questions to ask, I think.
Okay, I think you have your first reading guidance, and we can move on.
Where's Mr. Walker sitting over there, so I can see him? Yeah, it kind of surprised me.
Well, we're sharing the document. No citizens, no old business and citizens' topic response, and next meeting agenda items I think we're clear on.
One piece of breaking news?
Yes.
For people at home who chose to watch us instead of watching the warrant committee, the warrant committee just voted five minutes ago to assign $120,000 to the school budget in their recommendation for next year.
Great.
So that's, that's item two and half of item three.
Where does that take us? Pull that out. Item two and half of item three. So, okay. I was just going to say, Mr. Walker, thank you for all those minutes of the meeting. So that was, that's great, a lot of work.
More coming next week.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion to adjourn.
Some more.
On the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Yes.
It's your now.